She took both of them, didn't she?
What?
Your cookie challenge.
That was years ago.
She took both of them. I don't either.
Seven, eight years ago.
Maggie.
Yeah, are we on air?
Yeah, we are now.
We'll talk later.
We'll go ahead and call the meeting. If it's.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Kim Harrison Edwards here. Councilwoman Sherry Rogers here. Councilman Randy Bowen.
Good.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump. Councilman Herb Curtis.
Here.
City manager Nate Stansbury.
Present.
City attorney Brian Bailey.
Here.
Finance director Susie Johnston.
There.
Chief Josh Thomas.
Excuse me.
Chief Jimmy Suttle. Building code zoning enforcement officer Marty Lewis. Street commissioner. Mike Sterrett. Sanitary director Dee Evans.
Hey, do we have any public comment?
None.
Speak now forevermore repeat. Thank you for it.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, budget revision twenty twenty-three.
Okay, as you all know, we've got to do a budget revision before July thirty-first for our general fund. Um, you can pass out a copy. Everybody's got a copy there for them. This is proposed. Front and back. Already good. Oh. Yeah, I'll talk over with you real quick here, but that's a lot. It's a lot of information to digest.
Yeah.
You know, we're getting better at it. I won't say this is a perfect document by any means or a perfect plan or if some things are still to be determined, I guess, in the sense of we'll see where some of the numbers end up falling, but best we've had so far, I'll say that. Uh, what I, what I've shown you on this, on these first couple of sheets, just for the whole document. The first, first, like, like our previous ones, you have your revenues, first couple of pages, and then you have your expenditure before we get into a line-by-line analysis of each, each account essentially. What you're seeing in green are things that, so when I make it, I guess we back up and speak a little bit more philosophically about our budget. A lot of things what we wanted to do last year didn't get done. And so in theory, we would have had that money to roll over. I, we didn't have as much money to roll over as we thought we may, we, we should or would have. And so I, I revised on this revenue side. So everywhere you see green, I bumped up our projected revenue. Now, nothing is at a point where of past what we collected last year or even it probably was in five or ten thousand, but it's still revised up quite a bit. And we'll just, you know, take the ministry fees. At this point, we're, we're down compared to where we were last year considerable. I'd say with, with
Forty-four thousand.
Forty-four thousand at this point. So we're back up now to twenty-one.
At this time last year today, forty-four thousand dollars less.
That we've collected, yeah, so far this point in the year. Either maybe people's gas, you know, it's something saying complacent, right? How's people doing today? But that's, that's worrisome and it's a worrisome trend, right? Since the data points say what's going on. Um, sales tax, we got that in. We're, you know, we projected roughly about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a quarter, maybe a little more than that. Last year, we brought in six hundred and forty thousand almost in sales tax. This first quarter, we're gonna run a hundred and forty. So we're already below that projection. Now, last year at this time, that's about what we brought in. So, yeah, maybe it's a summer thing. I don't know. Maybe there's some kind of business out there that's driving that. Inflation, but in theory, inflation should make your sales tax for revenue go up, but if everybody's hurting, pop a pocket with lies and stuff. Struggle, you know, people just cut backs. We'll see. So anyhow, what you're seeing in green, these numbers got revised. None of our revenues got projected down because of revenues last year. Like I said, I went through this. We're pretty close on everything. Wasn't it? Nothing was real worrisome to me. I, you know, we took the tax and said, we're really conservative last year because we didn't know, we didn't have a whole lot of historical data set up this way to kind of predict things. And so I'm confident we'll be okay. It looks roughly, we're gonna bring in every year. Things hold true, about two and a half million dollars. And you look at our bottom line, we're at three point four nine six. We had about nine hundred, some thousand that we rolled over. If you look at that top line, if there were nine seventy-three, six sixty-six, what our bank, our general fund was on July one.
And is our fund funds outside of this?
It is. It's a completely different account. So that's, yeah, not reflected anywhere in here. And none of these projects are necessarily, this is all to be driven by general fund expenditures, okay? So we'll get the revenues. You understand that? So we had balance zeros. That's why I brought those up. It's to try to take some of those tasks like paving that we didn't get to in the spring. Be able to roll that money back over into this next year to keep ourselves going, okay? Um, so for the most part, I think everything that I felt was really a huge priority made it. Uh, what you see on these second pages here that where there's red are actually getting the patient about it. Um, expenditures that was just four oh two up there on the front. These red items are things that got revised up for expenditures. So we're spending more than initially projected for the levy. And then the green replaces for outbounds and cost savings and revise those numbers down, okay? I just highlighted them for your quick, quick reference, okay? And so I'll, I'll just go through real, real briefly. Council, like you guys got a thousand dollar entries because I want to buy you a tablet so that we can give that to you for the meeting. So we don't have to print out these things every time. Let's drop those on as a digital file. Um, and any other expenses you may encourage. Uh, finance office that got revised, you know, quite a bit upwards, and that was due to was zeroing out community development position and moving that person into finance. So I, I merged that together and tried to find as much cost savings as I could. Um, yeah, city clerk's office and justice and things in there and all the law. You know, police judge's office went down. We started in the court last year. Um, we thought maybe we have a little bit more expensive materials and stuff like that. So I revised those down a couple hundred bucks to save us. You know, city attorney is, uh, wage increase was in there. City hall, um, just, just stuff that we needed and, and like I originally in our municipal levy, you can look at later, later back, there were four forty. City hall, we had a hundred thousand that put in the elevator. And I put in ten thousand more because I think the building needs painted, right? We'll see. Hopefully, we can save from both those projects and they both aren't that expensive, but you'll either that or we, we under, I'm not sure if you do, you one or the other. So just, just spitballing numbers. Yeah, I thought ten thousand sounded like a good, good round number. Um, switch, switching to the pager in six ninety-eight, your transfers and reimbursement. So that was your rainy day fund. In order to make this balance, I cut that down to twenty-five thousand dollars. That's what we put in the rainy day fund next year. These things, if things do, do better, we have some savings somewhere, right? We can bump it up. And I also took twenty thousand out of that rainy day pot, for lack of a better word, and put it towards contingencies. And so that, that allows us to kind of, if we have something that popped up or we need some money, we don't have any of these lines, we can use our contingency budget line to steal from, utilize, whatever, however you want to turn that, okay? And stuff that gives us a little more flexibility from a budget standpoint. Police department, um, June's position, I wrote that out of the budget, police clerk. Uh, I up, up some of the part-time monies, and I think we're gonna try to identify. We've been working through the police civil service and test to identify new uh, candidate sent to the academy. You know, right now, our, our police force is stratified. We're kind of getting upwardly stratified. Where all of our police officers have a lot more experience and so we thought we need, really, the gap we have to plug is somewhere at the bottom of the toad hole. Experience wise. And then, um, I guess the other thing to note is, uh, Officer Wetzel's indicate she'd like to, uh, get a canine dog replacement for the one that's aging out and under Mr. Real's care. And so since we already had the vehicle and most of the equipment, I think it was a ninety-one dot hundred dollar, ninety-five hundred dollar, uh, cost to purchase that dog and get trained with her and have to match with the police officer. And so she's indicated that. So as long as everyone's okay with that, I've built that into that budget. So really.
Actually, that has remained in budget.
Well, the
His nearest there.
Yeah, some of the costs for the dog maintenance, but the actual acquiring of the dog.
Right, right.
Yes.
So that's the only cost difference that.
I think it's a, you know, we get called often from what I understand from the police looking.
Right.
You guys still have your dog from different departments. I don't think anybody near, in our nearby neighborhood has a, has canine, so it's just, like I said, still have all the equipment. We just felt it was worthwhile utilizing. Okay, so just going back in the police department line. Yeah, so as I said, you lost June. You know, I utilized a lot of that savings for different properties there. They needed, so then they have the news. Another thing that was an added line to theirs was uh, their computer systems and their vehicles are outdated. And so now they've got this new CAD system and their computer response time can't keep up with the CAD system.
We bought the stand, so we didn't want computers. We bought the stands for their.
He built it, he built eleven thousand dollars into it. And I said, wow, lots of computers in the state age. We're, and it's just a conservative number. It's like he got quoted like the ultra rugged laptops, you know, as if they dropped there or wherever. And I'm like, well, how, how do we take this in and out? Not a whole lot, it sounds like. So we're gonna look and see if we can go semi-rugged or find just a, a better computer at a better price. But it's in the budget, right? It's something we're building in here as we go along to purchase those things and save the things that can be revised.
They need those probably to be in even right now.
Yeah, right. They're struggling with them. They don't have backflip keyboards or anything like that. So they're working at night. Don't have the ability to do those things. So just. Um, fire department, their main thing was I carried over the paving that didn't get done this past year in their budget. That's why I see a lot of increase there. The new engine payment, you know, kind of speeding that up before they kind of maintain the, their budget. So the payment, and then I have a twenty thousand dollars in there, uh, for a used Jeep vehicle. So like Jimmy, when he goes to he's home, he's called out, he has to drive either his personal vehicle to an accident scene or drives the firehouse to jump in a fire truck. And so we'd like to be able to get him a vehicle that he could take home, like, much like the policeman responding to that for home. I think, yeah, I broke some hose in it, right, Jimmy, and stuff like that. So any, I mean, right now, you're using a lot of, utilizing the volunteer just bought a new pickup truck. But before, they didn't have any kind of other truck to do any, it becomes immediate work. Either taking his personal vehicle or taking that, what was it, the rescue squad for after where you guys did. That's like, about lunch and a couple times a day. Um, so that's it. I revised fire hardens up a little bit because I don't think we quite covered that cost last year. So street construction, yeah, the hundred thousand we'd spend in the spring, I put that back in the budget so we can get those streets paved. Let's just talk about that a little bit. Asphalt's way up, because gas is way up. So we'll see how many streets we can get paid. But I think it was an extra twenty-five dollars a ton, what we had estimated last now. Yeah, that was probably asphalt index, index about a month behind. So maybe by the time we can get them back, prices dropped a little bit, maybe we'll be able to recover a little bit of that, but that, we're, things will probably get eaten. Couple streets might not make it, let's see. Um, otherwise, I think from all that standpoint, everything else remains the same from the last.
And this is the, not the street cleaning here at seventeen thirty.
Okay, yeah, let's talk about that.
Okay.
So inside the street department budget, we had, sorry, but that do accounts. Seven fifty, seventy toward the back here.
That's based off of last year's.
Yeah, it, that was kind of tried to have our cake and eat it too last year when we said this is, we thought we'd borrow a street sweeper. So we were trying to build some money in there for maintenance, street sweeper, fuel, things of that nature. I left that in there because I think that at the current trajectory, so what we ended up doing last year, we just used that money to rent streets to burn base for gas and stuff. So we could squeeze about two, two rentals out of here, yeah, two months out. What I ended up doing this year. So in the street department budget, when we did our municipal levy, we said we had forty-five greened for replacement one ton dump truck just as a placeholder, and we had twenty-five thousand for curb machine. We ended up just buying a Kirby grapple and found a supplier for pre-cast curb. So we're gonna try that first before we buy a Kirby machine. So I've written that out. I moved twenty-five thousand dollars towards the purchase of the street sweeper, and I put forty-five thousand in for replacement back. Again, that was more of a placeholder. Mike doesn't think really even on the truck at this point. It seems like we're going okay with what we've got, I think. Um, and we do, like, so the street sweeper, my thought is, we'll talk about this at probably a future meeting. Let's go out and try to find one around fifty thousand dollars and pay for half of it from our general fund budget and the other half from stormwater because they're providing the benefits of those those agencies, I guess. Yeah, I think the case could be made, you ran the street, sweep the streets for stormwater benefits to a degree, right? For eighty percent of it, that's what the outside of your town looking nice. Yeah, it doesn't really help the pavement to keep clean much, much, but I, I think. Yeah, stormwater.
And nobody in public, and.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying from a budgetary standpoint, I think you can make the argument, cover it all stormwater if you really wanted to. But we'll look at that together and see what we, what we're looking at. Because we need a jetter, I think, at some point. And I think that's a whole if we don't need a jetter for the street department uses, we need a jetter for cleaning drains, right? So that, that's a cost that's totally encapsulated within stormwater field now.
So what do you think about using that funding since it's something that the public requested?
As far as street sweeper?
Yeah.
We're good. I'm not opposed to it. It's just, I'll just build it in here so we have the money for it, right?
Yeah.
And, uh, I don't think we should buy a new one. Yeah, new ones two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I think no more really, if we buy one, we'll be using it, but we don't have a dedicated street sweeper position. It's not something that somebody's gonna be using every day. See it more as a, probably once a month, we'll street sweep your ward or something like that. Maybe, you know, if we have that bad storm, you got there, we'll be out there a little more frequently. But we're hoping we can get a used unit, probably ten, fifteen years old that has lower, lower mileage, lower hours on it. We know we'll have to spend more on maintenance, but let's get into that, that side of the game and see what we end up having. Right now, you can scrap one for about twenty thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, it looks like. So where are we really at? You know, twenty-five thousand dollars worth of use. And we're trying to, there's some suppliers in the eastern side of the U.S. here that who can like buy old units, refurbish them. So we're trying to identify some it's, it's tough to say. Nobody's got a unit out there ready to buy today. You've kind of got to work with them to, as, as they come in, they're selling really quick. So we, I think what we're looking to do is get authorization from the U.S. to spend up to a certain amount and try to find our candidate as they become available. But so we're hoping to work with a dealer of some sort or refurbishment company that's refurbished one, you know, put new bristles on it, work on the motor, that kind of stuff. And for the best, so we're.
Is that curb painting? Something.
We need to buy a painting machine. That's where I'm at.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, I can talk for a couple thousand dollars, but I think you need to have a machine. Because we don't have any way to paint crosswalks right now. I mean, the neighborhoods, we probably should have our crosswalks painted every time. So price a few of that. So.
That would be nice.
Probably three to five thousand would be my guess.
Okay.
It's not much different than the, the old machine they painted football field lines with. It's kind of similar design. Yeah, I did. We need that. If you can take care of it, it'd be something that you can use for a long time. Can't let the paint dry out and things of that nature. That's probably where we're gonna take it out.
That's what I was thinking.
I think we can probably get it in the street department. If these numbers are pretty general, last year, you know, when we bought stuff.
Send another willing through your way.
So that's, like I said, backhoe, it's questionable. I, you know, I think as far as all our equipment down here, that's the missing piece in the sense of we've got an old backhoe with sixty-seven model or something like that.
Yeah, something around, really, to me, I think we need
Yeah.
Scrap list, you know, because I, I know we could probably spend about fifteen thousand dollars there right now and it wouldn't even make it perfect.
Yeah. You still have sixty-seven case.
Yeah.
Everybody has. So that's, I'm just kind of earmarking mine there. So that's the street sweeper content. Does that make sense over here?
Oh, yeah. Uh-huh. Yeah, sure. Thank you. What is in the application?
Fifteen thousand.
I thought the street pervert.
Any questions for Nate about the proposed budget revision? Okay, if none, I'll entertain a motion to accept as presented.
I'm moved to accept the budget revision for fiscal year twenty twenty-three as presented.
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded in discussion. Land voted by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is the reappointment of Jim Trango as municipal court judge. And I guess that's something that we failed to do with the July appointments or reappointments.
Good to see you.
Thank you too. See you though.
Yeah. I'll move to reappoint.
Okay, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Judge Jackson. Yeah, I've enjoyed the program that we've put together thus far. I mean, there's, there's obviously been some changes. June was a really wonderful go-to individual, um, and really liked her. I spoke to Judy, right? Is that who I talked to?
Yes.
Oh, we've, we've made some, uh, some arrangements. Turn I've taught, and, uh, I do municipal judging in some other communities as well. What I'm planning on doing, this, thanks approval, is to just get her to, uh, maybe come down. We have a big talk today or there or something. In fact, wouldn't even mind doing something at Clarksburg with Judge Martin there. Dave Martin's been the judge forever. And Clarksburg, John David Martin. And, um, you know, ironically, him and I were flying out together that day. Of course, we're talking about municipal stuff, go figure. He said, you know, I've been, he's been the judge, I'll bet you, forty years, no exaggeration. He says, I can't remember the last criminal case I've heard. He said, it's all building, make it's all road inspection. And, um, I could possibly make that arrangement as well. And because they, you know, I'm after the point, because the thing, the problem is where I go. It's not worth it for one or two stop cases. It's just, you know, she didn't get, there's not enough visibility. Or if you go to Clarksburg, they're constantly. And we do a few here, but I'm, I'm telling you what, it's, in that municipal training for the municipal courts. It's okay, but it, it would be different if I was doing the training, just to be honest. And, and same thing with the courts. I mean, they learn a lot of basics and then they, and it, they shake them up a lot on foolishness that, oh, you can't do that. And someone over there disagrees. And before you know it, there's twenty-minute discussion and you know, they quote the auditor's office sometimes. Stop. I didn't work, I work at the auditor's office. That's not true. Maybe want something else.
How do you feel about Ken Sayre? Do you think he's a trusted resource?
He is, absolutely. And, and so is Travis, uh, Travis Kofenheb, Kofenheb, or who's the president of the Municipal Judges Association. Kid's good. But again, again, when you have that many year, because it's a yearly requirement to attend, when you have that many you have to train, you make the training so general, and then the discussions just go wild. And frankly, I, I go because I have to. I mean, I would like to go if it wasn't for the guy. Because it just, it's not that I know all that stuff because I don't know everything. Nobody does. But I've asked them year in, year out to have breakouts to the point where you, you know, have certain areas and, and you get to kind of pick your poison as to what, which point it's with me. I always want all update. I always want to go into the update section. And because I can, I'm not bragging, I can, I can hear in the case, there's, you know, and your city attorney does a good job. And he, we're the first person to. We're gonna meet after this, right? But, but honestly, he does a good job. He, he gets them to the point where they're prepared, you know, they're prepared. And, and, you know, most of this, and, and I've, I think that I, I expressed this in the interview. I believe municipal courts are courts of resolution. And I've had more police officers mad at me that you can shake a stick and I don't care. I was a cop. And, you know, I went through as many yours as, as most of them have. That doesn't, resolution means, and the reason, here's my philosophy municipal court. Municipal court is here. It's here in the camp. Chances are the police, the building inspector, the city, the whatever are going constantly be in contact with these people. You don't want to lay out a test against them mentality. You want to, you want to resolve. And that doesn't mean I'm not gonna find people because, as you know, I do. But then there's, but it's, it's trying to resolve it because, you know, it's gonna keep going. And do I hold off on fines a lot on, on building codes? Absolutely, because I would rather it go to the improvement than I would. But now there comes a time where you just, and, you know, and that's what I've had a lot of them say, he finds them, it's their fault. And it's generally my philosophy on it because, you know, and, and so many of these properties, they get tied up in the airship, and this one here's passed away. And then you've got two or three family members that have each other. And they're, they're, they're really fighting for a million dollars. And if the person didn't have any money when they were alive, what happened when they died? All of a sudden, that, this ring's truck come pulling in, and that's what they, they get carried away with. But, um, yeah, Andrew, I, I think Ken Sayre does a good job. I just, it, the ring is too large, frankly. It's just, and I have, this is not anything I haven't said to the municipal. I mean, that's just my opinion and, and, you know, it's worth as much as anybody else's or less, you know? But, uh, it's, I enjoy it here. And, uh, you know, again, with, uh, with the new clerk, we're gonna make it work. Absolutely. Occasionally, Brian even gets another attorney here occasionally. He'll show up. That's, that's always, we, we always enjoy that because you have two attorneys, it's a lot easier. You don't have one. And it's just, you know, because, because then he's gonna get to talk to them. And like I say, he does a great job at it. The building inspector, um, has that been capitalized? Have you got that completed or? Because I know Mike did it for a good.
Yeah, yeah, we're gonna, well, you just started you first.
Okay. Yeah, and that's a tough game too. It's as tough as well, law enforcement was, if you, you know, before they had to be certified. Those certificates, I mean, the, 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 the training is difficult and the classes are hard to pass. You know, and, and I, I'd say town the size of Weston, city the size of Weston, probably what, five or six required certifications, probably five, Weston, be my guess.
Oh, yeah, there's a one in force, right?
Yeah, well, yeah. And, and, and they have that temporary twenty-four month certification. So that's gives them the time to obtain the, the classes, but they're not easy. Like electrical's pretty, pretty complicated.
The, 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 we have now, he's got a, he used to run his own HVAC and plumbing company.
Yeah, he should be.
He's well-versed in those things. I think he's already passed the property maintenance certificate.
That's, that's, that's a superb start. And, yeah, and, 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 you know, there goes a difficulty in the code as well. The police are not allowed to do any enforcement on the code side. The only thing, I don't know what your charter requires, the only thing that police are allowed to do now, they can write citations for business license for lack of a, yeah. You agree with me, Brian?
I'll have to research that before.
Well, tower rule right now.
So is that, you said citation rights for the municipal court then?
Correct. Now, generally speaking, and you know what, what our guys do and stone with, where I'm mayor, they, they generally stop and say, sir, look. I can write you a citation right now, or you can run the city hall. That license. If they come back, take the next thing, they're back there working and they didn't do it, then there you go. Then you gotta get the license and you gotta take the fuck. Yeah, so it's, if they told them. Yeah, so if they told them, you know, but, yeah. There's, the attorney generals has an opinion on that. And that was a Clarksburg case, came out of Clarksburg because they work, that's where all certifications.
What were we talking about today? We're talking about, it wasn't receivership, maybe it was receivership. And basically the building code, taking these properties that have liens or where we carry out a property. And what, can we, have you, you have experience running those through municipal court where you sit there and say, hey, we want you to pay this? And if not, we're going to do something for you.
Correct, yes, we've done, we've done, we did two in Stonewood, we've done, let's see. Had another one in Salem that we were working on. We've probably done two or three in Salem. Nutter Fort is in the process of doing one right now. I rejected it, but they're, they're, they're going to, they've got it about ready.
So what, what kind of result do you end up with with, with, with municipal court?
Well, the city, the city ends up doing everything, placing the lane, basically just gives them the right to entry. And you end up doing all the work of contracting it if you've got the money to do stuff.
Okay.
We just finished one in Stonewood. Well, our city attorney had the patience to judge because.
Our sense too.
Well, and if they don't, if, if, I agree, he does. If they don't, then they're never going to accomplish it. He actually untied a juggernaut. And it was, it probably went over four or five states. And what had happened was this gentleman had got a lien on the property way beyond what I. I mean, they, they did it backwards, did it equity law. He had a lot of, a lot of terminal illness, you know, taking his life. And then there was, there was, I mean, the property sat empty as a lot of your have for probably twenty-four, twenty-six months. And it went booby. So what ended up happening was Joe Schaefer's, our city attorney, he just, he got in contact with the lending institution. And then somebody else, somebody else, somebody else said, well, you know, you're trying to get X. And I promise you, it's not even close to being worth Y. And it's, it's just, you know, he says, we're going to shoot you the photos. So they said, I'll tell you what, you can have it. So then we had to go and run to, we got his widow. Then we had to send a note to return her. She signed off and then we got his two daughters who also signed off. One daughter lived in, I believe, Nebraska or somewhere else. We had, so we had to pay somebody in that jurisdiction to do so. And then we got it and we took it down. We paid contractor to take it down and haul it away. Now we're going to do a public watch. A lot on the properties, yeah. And we've cut grass there, as you do, probably three years worth in that neighborhood. So you got that. And then we had an asbestos removal, cast and removal, so you got that. Yeah, we had about a ninety, ninety-six hundred dollar removal fee, I think is where we were with that. So minimum bids got to start, you know, where our pocket is. So I'm going to say, all right, I'm going to build, it's going to be probably about sixteen. And it, it's worth it. Yeah, it's not worth a hundred and sixteen, but it's worth sixteen clear. It was, it's worth way more empty than it was, but then being on it. So that's the most, that's our largest success story right now at this point. And then, you know, we have another that basically the guy's got somebody in there. He's, Jim, I need to talk to you, we're going to negotiate that. I've looked for you for two years. But, you know, so you get, it is one of these, that honestly, if you can get more people on line, get some money for it, leave that in there, hopefully keep replenishing that thing. You're not, you know, you're not spending a bunch of money you don't have. So maybe next budget shift. Budget thousand, that's, that's a bunch of money. It's a bunch of money and it doesn't really take down that much problem.
Two hundred ounces.
If you're lucky, we're lucky if you got it good, remove, you know, somebody can get it out of it. Thank you, Jim. Yes, sir.
Yes, thanks, Jim. We have a motion and a second roll call voting.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Welcome back, Jim.
Thank you very much. So the way, the, or the, I guess the charter requires this is yearly.
Yes.
The order is established in municipal court, but where we got this annual form for.
All right, thank you. Need anything else?
No.
All right.
Appreciate you coming.
See y'all, take care.
Okay.
Take care.
Take care.
Be careful.
And next consideration of support for the neighborhood watch picnic, which is Friday, August the fifth. I was apprised by a member of the neighborhood watch, not the Brooks family, but I guess every year they purchase everything for that and they do receive some donations. But there was concern with one of the members that the, the cost for food has really gone through the roof. And they wondered if this, if city council would entertain a request for a donation.
I think that, um, the cost of.
Who would the donation go to? Does they put watch after own bank account?
Yeah.
It's seventeen cents for Fourth of July picnic, so.
Oh, I know. Oh, I understand.
Thank you, Debbie, for that donation.
So I said that I would bring it to council, so if you're.
Did anybody, I mean, it's got, because I, when I saw Betty Sunday, when I gave her money yesterday. I said, here, they said they had everything, so. A lot of the people, so I mean, I'm okay with it, but did you check with them?
I was there yesterday and they purchased.
Okay, yeah, 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 so.
Yeah, I know this one from Debbie.
Nate, did you have an idea?
I don't know that they have a budget at all, they have not much of one. And I know that she has door prices, nice door prices too.
Well, they plan for around a hundred people.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know, there are a number else.
Where were we taking the money from?
The occasion.
No.
I don't know.
To the council.
That's fine.
I guess, like, pads. You got two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Make that measure for two fifty.
I think that's, that's fine.
I knew that we support the neighborhood watch picnic Friday with a contribution from the city of two hundred and fifty dollars to help cover the expenses of food and supplies.
Oh, sure.
It's been moved and second, any discussion? We'll have voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump.
Yes.
Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all very much. Can we do that? Yeah. And just call her and tell her you have something for her, if you would.
Yes.
A consideration of roll off dumpster.
That's that out there. So we talked previously about.
I like taking on you.
I like directness.
Me too.
Wouldn't I just?
Okay.
Thank you.
This is an open discussion, nothing's been decided. I just thought, put something on paper, we, we help discussion. So we had talked about, I think, when Lady Garden was here, about having, you know, we have a roll off dumpster with our street department that, you know, people have times where they've got trash piled up in our homes. Could we provide that roll off as, as a service to these people at a, a certain cost or whatnot? So we called down to the public service commission at one point and I, I think we're in the ordinance, surprise, surprise, to be able to implement this service and wanted to set a rate, things of that nature. But they didn't see any other issue with us doing, carrying out this task. So what I provided to you is essentially a sample policy that we, I talked the morning about it and said, yeah, what, what would this look like? Mike, I don't know, I, I think I give you a copy of it, you have, I think. And, yeah, it's, it's not real, real complicated. We essentially said we get the, for two hundred, what we would do is we charge them two hundred dollars for the rental of the, of the roll off. We'd ask for a five hundred dollar deposit. They would have to roll off for three days, upon the third, we pull up and all the thing off. So we're going to get a situation where we're weeks down there waiting for our roll off to be there. And then we would dump the trash or wherever debris is, wherever we decide that, you know, if it's C and D, maybe we can take it down to restaurant, if it's other materials, we may have to take it somewhere, a different location, our metal field. We would then do the dump fees and then provide them a refund for their deposit minus the two hundred dollar rental fee plus the tip fees, whatever that cost was. And if there was an overage, which I mean, that would be, we had four tons of material, I think it's forty-five dollars a ton for them to be even close to, you'd have six tons of material, right, roughly? That you could have in that roll off before we have an overage, which would be a lot of trash. At that point, we would send them a bill for any kind of overage of that deposit.
Is there a big need for this?
You know, I don't know if there's a huge need, but it's something that, like, also one of our, one of our employees approached us about it and asked us, hey, I heard you were thinking about, don't you guys ever get that resolved? I said, no, I'm sorry. And so he had a family member, recently passed away and the family member had a bunch of stuff in their home. And so they thought that that might be the easiest way for them to clean it out, allow them to borrow trailers or something like that.
Right. When you first started, there was someone along my second, wasn't there, that requested that because they didn't have the funds to, to pay for that?
For sixty-nine, we, things are supposed to be.
Oh, that is what say residents money by.
I, you know, I didn't call Mountain State Ways and ask what the roll off was. I, I think it's pretty expensive. I think at one point I called.
Eight hundred dollars a day for a week.
Eight hundred dollars for it, so it would be considerably cheaper.
Yeah. And here's another thing that I'd like to ask, like, if, if there would be a neighborhood and there'd be like several neighbors that wanted to go together, it might be even more cost effective for them.
Possible, yeah.
It's, it's in one place.
Yeah, we wrote it in there, let, there, somebody, the renter's going to be responsible for the material placed in it. So in that situation, you, you know, maybe you better know your neighbor very well.
Right, yeah.
But I think ultimately, somebody would have to sign on the dotted line and say, I'm responsible. And if I got a dumpster die, I have to get something out of there, can't go.
Right.
That person's going to have to do it, right? So, yeah, it's a possibility. It, it just, I guess my only hesitancy, tendency is this, this starts us down the path. It's this conflict for us, you know, with private all or anything like that, but I'm not really hesitant about saying that.
Public service commission couldn't answer that question?
Well, I know, I think they did. I think they said we can serve this, we just pass, pass our orders and have to reconsider rates and say we're going to do it. But it's just, you know, there's optics thing here, right? That we, if we take that step, we're, I'm not saying it's going to take off, but you never know, right? You may, might have found a, an opportunity, I guess, for lack of a better word. Does that cause us any waves with the hauler? I don't think there's anything legally that we're running into there. Because you want it to be a good service for landlords.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. These properties that are junked up, maybe it's, we pass it and it's not really something that we want to be publicized, widespread. But at least it gives us the ability to help out and get that debris out of the way.
Sure, it's helping with cleaning up on the town, it's helping our citizens, so.
What do you think, Mike, two hundred dollars for a rental, is that enough?
We'll be, we'll be throwing something out there too. I'm not, I'm not for this, okay? For a simple reason, this, because I bought a house over on Shatter Street and I use my own dump trailer. And the haulers was in there and Jimmy can tell you how many haulers people was in. We come up with needles, we come up with other kind of different stuff in there. So if, if one of our employees would happen to get one of those needles in there or whatever, I'm, I'm not for it. I'm going to be honest with you, I think we need to use our stuff for the city stuff. Now, go for the price wise, I'll fuck with you on that, Nate. That's probably pretty decent. I know.
I just, is it fair to, for our time, John, thinking an hour there, an hour back, two hundred dollars an hour, good enough for us? And from a street department employee, I think that's pretty well covers the rate.
That covers all right.
Fuel probably.
I just think there's insurance, insurance is saying that we got on there and then we wrote that down there and said, that's, I just think there's some insurance things on there if we get another guy hurt. Good luck on Friday, I'm back on workers' comp. I, I really don't, I don't like it, but hey, it's up to you, it's up to council, I'm just throwing my stuff out there. I've already, I'm sorry. I mean, it uses our stuff for, for city stuff. Because I think, I think when you look at that, one time they lunged out something through Dominion and a guy got electrocuted or something and it was a big per diem with that. It's up to you guys. It's.
There's always insurance for us.
Yes, it's, it's your also. Price wise probably wouldn't be bad, Nate, if you were going that. Sorry, but I had to throw it in.
No, that's a good point to bring up. Our employees would be handling this stuff.
Or you got to tarp it, you got to take the tarp off when you get there and everything like that. So, you know, you can't get down a ripped out tarp.
So what is the cost of this dumpster, did you say?
As far as like acquisition costs? We've already acquired it, I don't know what, I don't remember what was off the top of my head. We bought the dumpster.
Oh, we bought the dumpster?
Yeah, we had, yeah, we had a dump truck and we bought that dumpster roll off. But we, we thought we might be able to do some smaller homes with it too.
Sorry, yes, I'm sorry, Nate. She was asking where we, I'd say. That's fireworks.
I wrote down three things. I wrote insurance, waiver, and what happens if there's damage to property, like.
Like the dumpster itself.
Dumpster itself, or they put it in the yard and tears up the yard and all that, does that come back on us? Or if somebody gets hurt while loading it, that's our property, so therefore they got hurt. And they can come back on us, correct?
I think we could create some kind of waiver, some kind of language to mitigate that, if not wholly eliminated.
Yeah, just say it's somebody's house, someone has a brick truck and it's up. It's maybe somewhere. I mean, this, I'm looking at the worst case here.
Can we see that additional documentation before we?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, talking to Brian this afternoon, we're not going to be able to approve anything tonight anyways. We're going to need ordinance and that stuff, but maybe we can include it. Yeah, but I just want you guys to see kind of the, from my, my standpoint, this is what I've kind of outlined, what it looks like. And I want to take, everybody take the shots at it, see what I missed, right? Things we need to include, if we want to go this direction, so. I think if you want to table, you want to give me a motion to continue to pursue it, I'll do that. But if you, you know, there's a consensus that, no, we don't want to do this and make that motion as well. What did I? I like to see it, Dave, that's my, my.
Not everyone at once.
I'll give a shot, nobody wants to, right? I'll make a motion that we table this and address it in the future with more documentation and information and ideas.
Okay, it's been moved and second, any discussion? Voting by roll call.
Councilwoman Sherry Rogers.
Yes.
Councilman Randy Bowen.
Yes.
Councilwoman Debbie Gump. Councilman Herb Curtis.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, mushy carries.
My first motion.
Okay, discussion of changing meeting dates and format. I believe that should read.
And format?
Somewhat.
What's the discussion? We can talk about anything, look.
Nate will explain.
They were, you know, as we've had meetings, we've realized, like, especially our regular sessions, they, they tend to go long. I think if you read the literature, whatever literature that is, where it's municipal league or open meeting act literature or whatnot, they try to say, you know, an hour meeting, hour and a half talk is what you're looking for to keep people engaged and the participants happy and all of that stuff. And so, I, looking at our format, I guess, that without something like taking out your department head, you know, you're looking at two meetings. So, we've already, we've talked a lot about how our finance report is tough to pull off on the first Monday. That first week is very difficult. Most of our new employee, that will change, but it's, it's a difficult thing right now. Even our department heads, their reports, we have them, thirty-first is on a Sunday and the first is on a, a Monday. That's tough for them to be able to get their stuff done. So, I don't know. I know Brian and I talk about this often. We, we don't know if this is how city government's meant to be or if it's just because we're trying to do a lot, but it seems like one meeting a month is not enough. Inevitably, we're meeting two, three times to pull off things we've gotta do, you know? So, I guess, we looked at the charter and the charter says that, you know, it establishes the first Monday at six P M. is to be our meeting date, but that can be changed by ordinance, by council. Charter says. So, I kind of wanted to throw that up as this, as a discussion point for you all to say, what do we want to do for meeting-wise? And if I'm a council person, I'm sitting there saying, if I gotta go to two meetings a month, or will be required or have regular meetings, then maybe I should get paid more. If you want to do some, something to that effect, you're looking at, you know.
Yeah, that's.
Well, I, I, I think it's a little bit of a point, but I don't know.
You know, we're in a third or four now. Let's just have two mandatorys instead of three or four other ones plus the one.
Right, it gives, it gives your. Get everything into two of them and be done with all these every week, every week, every week. Set two meetings a month and if you can't handle those two meetings, then maybe move it to next month.
There may be, you know, special, special circumstances around, right? You still have that ability, but at least you're not having a special meeting on the regular, you know? That's it, so, right with it, right there with you. Did you say something, you want to say something?
Voting a, voting a pay raise for council, you can't do it for yourselves. It votes, you have to vote it for the next council coming in.
So, that's it. With the, this being the last year, I thought, man, it's something you want to consider for the next council as well, if you want to exercise this format, so. That's really all I was wanting to discuss. I'm offering it up for you all to consider and see what you want to do with your meetings, it's your stuff, but I know from our standpoint, having some hard, hard days where we know we're gonna have a second meeting, it takes, it takes effort from duty and I, together with you all to just get ourselves to the place where we put our agendas together and all stuff.
Just availability, yeah.
Yeah.
The amendments.
Right, well, I'm not very good at doing it because I'm always thinking, one more thing to add.
So, if you happen to be interested in a mandatory two meetings a month, would you want to keep those the first Monday and the third Monday?
It's possible.
Or the second and the fourth?
Yeah, and this is, I guess, an opportunity for you guys to say, it's Monday the best day. So, it's kind of up to you all.
Your public servants, they're all mandatory.
But if you look at, I mean, I'm looking at, I look today at the commission calendar and everything and there's no longer meetings happening on that list. Once you get into the other days of the week, you guys, C and D and, you know, a lot of other important things, chamber commerce and all of that stuff.
But any meetings are charged hard, especially here. It's like, it seems like everybody sits around all weekend, figures out what, what city's doing wrong, we, we get it, calls us Monday, wants us to fix it.
I find notes to you this morning, I know.
But that, that's a Monday here. This is how it works, but it's, then you're trying to prep for meetings and stuff. That's a little bit of a challenge, but I think it's why a lot of people don't do Monday meetings and make that a better day for us. It's what we're using right now. Santa Claus is second Monday, so you'd, you'd avoid that conflict. I think that that's, from our standpoint, the city, you didn't have to issue with it. And you have fifth Monday, you get the, you get the week off, essentially.
Yeah, again, that one, they would need an ordinance and there's nothing to be done.
Monday sometimes, March three eighth, if I'm out of town. That's my only free week that I can ever take vacation from work.
Right, and same for our staff, right? The more we, more we meet, the more everybody's gotta get, tighten things down. And I think that that's the other places I've been, not to make, make us them, but our depart, the department heads have never really been required to be at every meeting or even be meetings. And usually, the way we work, the department head, they had an item on the agenda, you know, if they're requesting special allocation or had a project, they might need some explanation, explanation. The mayor or city manager request for them to be there to help, uh, provide detail in the background, information if required. If they didn't have something on that docket like that, they didn't come and it was up to the mayor's event or figure out the answer or get back to the council, so.
Half the department heads are one and half the department heads are another, you get more detailed discussion.
You can do that too, if you want to.
I'm covering up some good points.
Or if you had their reports a full week ahead of time, you could call with questions prior to the meeting and get them answered or at least have them there to answer it.
The fire, I think fire police are the ones that really struggle with the ends of months of course, because, you know, the incidents happen on those last days, they can't, last days of the month, so.
I think it's nice to have department heads there, but when I look at the length of our meetings, those people have worked all day long and they're there until eight-thirty at night and they're not, from what I understand, they're like getting to take that time off. They're just giving of their time and that's not fair.
It's too long. Nate?
I'm making a motion to adjourn. I struggle, I'll just say, I mean, I struggle with, with the relationship with council and this because I, I don't want to give you, I don't want to feel like I'm wasting your time, but I also want you to be informed, right? It's a fine line to walk a lot of times and I feel, you guys probably say, let's, tell us anything. And, you know, plus you gotta do your day job, so, you know, it's kind of up to you to determine, you know, if it's one of those things where you want to come in and sounds good, let's keep on living, we're out of here, or you want to ask a lot of questions, I want to provide you those opportunities. And even if it's something where you're like, you know, I'd rather, if you'd rather spend more one-on-one time with the city man, city manager to get answers, I'm okay with that too. Doing like a regular workday or even meetings to avoid longer meetings, so it's just us having a conversation, just like figuring out what you want to do.
I know, you've told me that before.
Can't have more talking during the.
Yeah.
And I never, you've told me that before, stop asking questions.
Fashion sick and crisis with order in our life.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you. It's a.
It is hard to get it all done by Friday.
Yeah.
She has.
But if we had it on Wednesday, it probably hard, wants to get it done on Tuesday or Monday, you know?
I mean, then everybody's busy to provide this or that, right?
I think having the Monday, getting it done on Friday, at least gives you all the weekend to look at it, you know?
Did we offer enough direction that I'll be, I'm good with whatever, everything works.
I, I don't know where everything else, what do you want?
I can make it accessible, it makes everybody, you know, life easier for anyone else. And I think that the department head should be required to get those meetings, you know?
You, you think they should?
Split it up like, right, Randy suggested, but I don't think that should be, have to be, you know, what those meetings, but it's an hour and a half, hour, hour and a half.
Maybe to be sure, they'd be more concise and they'd be more direct, those direct departments. Third or fourth departments one time and third or fourth the next time. Half the committees one time, half the committees the next time.
I mean, we're spending a lot of time now. Now, that's true. Our employees are spending a lot of their extra time now. If that cuts down on, on them having, you know?
I think so, I think it's fair.
And you're trying to.
What do you think, Herb?
If it keeps us from meeting three or four or five times a month, I'm for it. Two times.
Whether you can kind of plan, right? You know, you know exactly.
In the public council. And you would need to check with the commission. Oh, okay, excellent. As well.
I love it, yeah.
True. I mean, I, we don't have to meet at commission chambers if we don't want to, I don't think. If we want, or if we want to, we can meet up there twice. It's kind of to you all as well, you know, I think continue to have a meeting up there as your second meeting here. That's the other aspect, I guess, to think about.
Well, Councilman Bowen arranged that venue for us and in the beginning, it brought more people out. And I don't know, I kind of think if you've got a hot button issue, you're still gonna get people out, so maybe we should still plan for up there. That's my thinking.
If something that you need to leave there, you can do that. If there's anything you, you need to, like, us, we're doing that, he's calling everything missing. If he needs equipment or do the sets of equipment, so that he doesn't have to call things back and forth, so I'm like, I'll find him a spot there.
I wondered about those little mics that you pin on that would go into your system. Would that work?
Well, I think it's just like, it's his system and everything, too.
I'm gonna shoot those silent doors, if please bellow. Everybody talk up.
I want that to be a short, right, all right? It's, when we're going to the elevator here, we're hoping that we can make this, that's, I'm willing to keep all and make it work.
I hate to see you do that.
We're okay.
I know.
Marty's been very helpful.
He's young, he's young.
Okay, so we're good on that.
We'll work on ordinance for that.
Okay. City manager update.
I think I've shared you all my, my stage at this point. Uh, oh, let's talk about Department of Highways. Oh, I didn't get that today. So, we got an email last Friday that Bear Contracting is gone on Thursday. They're done. I requested some further information from Department of Highways, which I did not receive today. So, ultimately, this comes back down to, I'm gonna say it publicly because I think we need to be public at this point. Brian and I feel, and I think the mayor and Curves and everybody else has been involved, Department of Highway and us have a contract for the construction of this bridge. And our contract is essentially for Department of Highways to sell the bridge. Now, Department of Highways has turned around and they've hired a contractor to design and they've hired a separate contractor to build. And so, their disputes are between themselves. My only concern in that, at this point, is, our, in this latest, uh, notification from the contractor there, they've indicated that they've requested a change order. In our discussion with Department of Highways, they had indicated that Bear had suggested a change order, but they felt it was Bear's responsibility to come up with the change order and I guess designed the change order, I think was the language used. And obviously, Bear hadn't done that, so they rejected their change order, request for change order. Now, Bear in this letter has basically said, we don't, we're not designing contractors and we don't feel like it's our responsibility to design your change order for this bridge. I don't know where that leads, because I don't have a copy of the contract between Department of Highways and Bear. So, I've requested at, either that contract or at least the change order portion of that contract to fully understand how that procedure for the request of change order is to occur. Otherwise, I think, if Bear holds true to their letter, they're gonna walk off and then we're gonna be left in a situation where Department of Highways will most likely call on their bond, their construction bond, and we'll have a process where, you know, we'll have to rebid the project for completion of portions.
Which is more time.
More time, yes.
Okay.
And we've communicated to them that time is of the essence on our side. We've built it, you know, our roads, detours have utilized enough for this and that we need to get this thing opened up. So, when our conversation that we had last time or two weeks ago with Department of Highways, I requested that they have a public, uh, press release ready to explain the situation since it was essentially their project and their issue. And I indicated to them, they didn't provide that, that we were gonna release our own press release, explain the situation in our words, how we view it. Be fair to everybody, but I think ultimately, we're not gonna be thrown in the bus because it's not really, I think it's under our control, in my opinion. Sorry. There, I'm sorry.
I just, I'm, I'm just curious, if it's three, if it's three bid, can the money be changed? Or where, where the city be held responsible for more monies? I mean, as far as what the new contract between the state and the third-party contract.
And I think, and this is just my off-the-governor opinion, had, had the, had the design been quote-unquote right and Bear not had any complaints, we'd have been on the hook for, I'm making up a number, a hundred more dollars and we'd have had to pay twenty of that and D O H would have to pay eighty of that. Now, with this change, with a potential change order, that one hundred dollars might be five hundred dollars. But due to no fault of new, no fault of our own, there's four hundred more dollars of cost that shouldn't have been there. And so, I'm gonna bound the table saying, no, 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 we had this, had this been done originally the right way, it would only been a hundred dollars. So, we're only in it for twenty. D O H, you're in it for the rest of it.
And we asked that question at the D O H meeting and we were assured by D O H that there would be no additional cost borne by the city. For what it's worth.
No matter what arises, I mean, is that language in the contract that they're saying that a foundation laws?
The way they explained it, they felt that the, the bond was for enough value that if the project had to be rebid, E O V would be covered. Am I quoting that right, you think? Like, that was the way they explained it to us? That does sound like a good deal and I guess when I see it, I'll believe it.
Right.
That's where I'm at. Cause I don't, I'm not privy to any of that stuff between the contractor and minutes. I don't know what the terms are.
So, so up to this point, is there anything they've assured us of that's worked out that way or have we just been getting assurances all along?
Frankly, I feel like I'm educating them on their own contract. Brown and I are informing them of the terms of contract and from the wall. And that's why I've asked to see the change order portion, because I'm sitting there in the room with, with them and they're kind of looking at each other saying, well, yeah, they, they did request a change order. Yeah, I guess we did reject it. And it doesn't seem like they really even understand their, their processes, so. If it's something where I think Bear has done, has done their diligence in requesting a change order because some psych condition, I mean, I, if I read that language and I interpret it, I'll do Brian a shot to look at it. I want to go to Department of Highways, I think you need to grant that change order, which will be gonna cost us most likely.
The responsibility of a change order would come back to the city.
Well, a.
If we're talking about the wall, because the state's done made the comment that that would be our responsibility.
Well, and I guess I disagree with them in that aspect, because I feel that if you can't construct the bridge without the wall being affected, it shouldn't have been part of the project.
Uh, as an engineer, I think they caught that.
Yeah, I, I think.
Who decided that the wall was part of the project?
Was part of the project?
Yeah, who, who's claiming that that wall should be part of that project?
Bear, bear.
Well, I, maybe the designers have something simple on that wall. I don't know. The people who designed, who designed the bridge have some kind of portion of that design saying, hey, there's gonna be some kind of piece of this bridge sitting on this wall.
The, the approach ladder, you're telling, well, well, the engineer, you'd be on the engineer, design engineer side, because they're saying that their approach slab is rebarred in such a manner that it's not a cannibalism over that existing wall. Bear's saying, hey, we've got to chip out a portion of that distant wall for that approach slab where you're saying it needs to be. So, I think at that point, if you're chipping out an existing wall, it's in the project. That's my feeling on it. And, and if you can't chip it out because it's gonna fall apart, then that shouldn't have been considered as part of the design. That's my, my feeling on it.
Bear signed the contract with that.
And there's an aspect of that too, where, and that's this Department of Highways told us, and I mean, well, they, they never made a comment to us until after they'd already signed the contract, they saw the plan and they're not wrong. And so, there's some probability there, I think, where Bear's gotta decide what they, you know, they look at the plans, were they not comfortable with it? But, oh, we, we all are in agreement, we just want to see the thing that. But we, we all are in agreement, we just want to see the thing that get built. I even broached it with them, I said, you know, do we, is this something where I approached Bear on the side and say, give me a price to fix this wall and get this over with? For the sake of getting the bridge done, it's just, that's a huge can of worms that we shouldn't have, that we really have to.
What is the date the D O H is supposed to get back with this by?
It was last Friday or early this week, right? And so Bear did that for us. It's in this letter, tells us what they're going to be doing.
We also had a discussion during that meeting about the wear and tear to, was this amended?
True, we did. And here, I, I don't want to be Debbie Downer here, okay?
Hey.
But I.
Being negative.
Here to see them. And I literally know nothing about this. And I'm the straight commissioner. I knew nothing about the email. I knew nothing about the email, but I was asked last Friday what was going on and no way to tell. And you're right, there, we do have a thing that, but they were supposed to get back with me on the, on the contract to how we were supposed to maintain the, the detour.
Yeah, there was some thought that monies were included in that.
We never heard back from anybody from Department of Highways.
Never heard back from, or anything such as that. And I got a phone call on Friday that the guy with the bridge, which he was the one, right?
Yeah.
That he was on vacation. I gotta say, I didn't know anything was going on with this and that. I think it, I think I probably should know what's going on.
I think the public needs informed as to what's going on. It's, you know, because we said that as well. Yes. And we, we need press release from Department of Highways. We're, 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 we're going to make one.
I think it's, maybe I'm wrong, but I think you let the process play out till Thursday, right? Till that contractor walks off.
I understand.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I've been with it. I think we use the time in between now and then and try to get with Department of Highways and get some kind of feeling on what their next steps are.
Well, we know what their next steps are.
Well.
Wasting more time.
That's what they told us two weeks ago.
Now, we have a signed contract, right? That says, does that contract say that we were to have the bridge in ninety days?
But this is, I don't think our contract with Department of Highways has any kind of timeframe in regards to how fast they build it. They're, they have a contract with Bear.
They do, we, we have nothing.
Bear's already passed their date. Their date was June twenty seventh, so they've already gone past, so I think they're also, I'm not sure, maybe getting fined.
Plus they've.
How about this? We're sitting here and it's a thousand what ifs. And there's one thing that's guaranteed.
What?
That bridge is not passable. Why don't we require somebody to make that thing temporarily usable? There's only one apartment that is not finished. It's, it's passable to the west side of Butland. There's road plates, I don't care, something. Tell anybody screws up this much, should have a contingency plan to get people across that river, it's went foreign there. There should be some kind of a temporary solution to get us across that bridge because there's only twenty, twenty, twenty-five feet of it that's not finished.
I hear what you're saying.
Not finished, finished, but usable.
Yeah. And the department of this on there.
Contract is not our thing.
Yeah, it's like, we don't.
Have them provide that.
Who's them?
Them?
Yeah.
D O H.
And I'm not, I'm not wrong, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I think they'll say, no thanks. Then we're suing them. And I think that's ultimately where we end up. We're going to be in a breach contract situation where they haven't delivered a bridge as we asked, right?
Can I say this publicly? We're not good partners.
This has been a difficult project.
They are not good partners for the work of our town.
Remember, they want to make another bridge on down there by, and D B O?
That's their bridge.
Huh?
That's their route.
All right, I just, there's a, there's a provision here, I want to show you all, see. They essentially wrote themselves, I'm assuming they wrote this, if, if it goes belly up.
They themselves.
In the event the division terminates construction contract for project, if construction costs have been incurred with the vision, the vision then shall make appropriate efforts to complete the structure of project. However, in the event the division is unable to complete construction of product for any reason, any remaining balance of funds provided by the city for construction of project, which funds provided by the city or the U S pay twenty percent, shall be reimbursed to the city within forty-five days after those termination. Any funds associated with city total deposit management of the project shall be refunded to the city. I think that gives them carte blanche. And I'm not a lawyer, but I, if they decide they want to terminate.
Scroll back up. Division terminates construction. Which is what's going to happen Thursday.
Okay.
Awesome. Division still has to make an appropriate effort to complete the construction. Now, what's appropriate? Is it putting a piece of plywood across it? Me? Is it, is it, bend it back out and then get it finished in October? Probably. And if they don't do that, then they can quit.
The monies will go to, what's monies they have now will go to whoever gets to come in and finish the bridge. But they have to go through their process.
And their process would help to get out with such response.
I don't know, but I gave her a name.
Well, it's not a whole bridge now, so I would like to get through that all in the process.
Right.
I think they'll put a, you get a whole right person.
Can we claim like some type of, of emergency?
That's what she needs to say.
Emergency need and.
What we've been through, what we've been going through.
Right, exactly. Our fire trucks are, you know, it's a change.
How long does our? How long does our eastern blast with fosters?
She said, how long does our eastern blast with fosters? It's probably long.
How long is what?
The arrangement with fosters.
Bob, so.
I never, huh? Well, we renewed that, didn't we, Brian?
I was like, wait, see, the length of that.
Where it ever started.
I can't remember how long we made that one go.
Well, we'll check on that. We had, we had the renewed ratings, so we, we've been, there's another one that we've done. Yeah, since, but I don't know how long that will last, we'll check. I, I just wanted to bring that to attention because I think, like Brian was saying, shall make appropriate effort. Those kinds of terms are what you argue about in court, what was appropriate effort. And so if, if they give a spur up their butt, for lack of a better word, and they said, we're terminating this, I think they could potentially just walk away.
The D O H?
Yeah.
And leave us without a bridge?
Yeah. It depends, depend on how, how nasty our fight gets, right?
They don't give us money back, right?
They'll give us back our twenty percent that has been spent so far.
We can finish your, our, our thousand dollars.
But we'll see, I don't know, but I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Jeff Allen still do bridge checks? You know? Who doesn't know? Who doesn't know?
Are we good with this conversation?
I'm sorry, not the east of you guys.
I second Randy's motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor of the German, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.